This is Jason Anderson. We are calling this town council meeting to order. Today is Tuesday, April 11th, 2023, and it's currently 7:03 PM. Mr. Wood, could you lead us?
Heavenly Father, again, we just seek your wisdom and your guidance to do the work here of the town that you've put us in the position to not only lead, but to serve as well. And we pray that we would honorably serve those that have elected us as well as you. We pray this in your holy and precious name. Amen.
For allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
At this time, we are actually going to start our public hearing on item 14A. And 14A is consideration in action on ordinance. I apologize, my mic was off. At this time, we are opening the public hearing regarding item 14A on the agenda, which is consideration in action on ordinance amending Chapter Two, reducing the number of regular members of the Inland Wetlands and Water Course Commission. Ms. Cloro, could you just go over this, please?
Yes, so the, um, this ordinance was introduced to the town council last month, and this would be reducing the number of commission members from seven commission members, regular members, to five regular members. That is, uh, in line with all of our other land use commissions. All of our other land use commissions are five-member commissions with alternates. This was the remaining one at seven members. The Inland Wetlands Commission Chair and Members had requested the council revisit that because they've struggled with getting quorums and having enough to participate for meetings. So they requested that to be evaluated to determine if it could be moved down to five. Legal has reviewed. Five is acceptable. There's no restriction or requirement to be at a certain number. And again, it's in line with all of our other land use commissions. Ordinance Subcommittee reviewed this and recommended this to the council for ultimate approval and adoption. The last month, a regular meeting, the town council scheduled this public hearing. And then after the public hearing later on in the agenda, you'll have this as an action item.
Thank you. And I will note, there were multiple meetings that the Inland Wetlands Water Course Commission had to cancel during, over the past year due to not having enough members who could attend the meeting, so they didn't have a quorum. So anyone who would like to come and speak to this item, please come up to the podium, state your name and address.
And if I may, we did not receive any written public comment for this public hearing.
Thank you. Last call for comment for the public hearing. Seeing no comment, the public hearing is closed, and we'll move on with the agenda. For roll call purposes, all council members are in attendance except for Mr. Kertula and Mr. Whitehead, who are both absent with notification. Next item up is 5A, adoption amendments to previous meetings, special town council meeting March 7th, 2023. And 5B, regular town council meeting, March 21st, 2023. Can I get a motion to adopt these?
So moved.
Motion has been made by Mr. Wood, seconded by Ms. George. Discussion, corrections? Seeing none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. We'll now move on in the agenda. Next item up is 6A, presentations, proclamations, and declarations. The first one is a proclamation recognizing April 23rd as World Autism Awareness Month. Whereas autism affects an estimated 1 in 54 children and 1 in 45 adults, and is a complex disorder that affects each person differently, resulting in unique strengths and challenges. And whereas autism can cause challenges with verbal and nonverbal communication, social interaction, and repetitive behaviors, and can affect anyone regardless of age, race, ethnicity, gender, or socioeconomic background. And whereas autism is often accompanied by medical conditions that impact quality of life. And whereas a comprehensive collaborative approach will help to advance research, providing a better understanding of many forms of autism while strengthening advocacy efforts and ensuring access to services and resources throughout the lifespan. And whereas early diagnosis and intervention tailored to individual needs can have lifelong benefits, easing the transition to adulthood, excuse me, and fostering greater independence. And whereas each person and family affected by autism should have access to reliable information, supports, and opportunities to live up to their greatest potential. And whereas the town of Killenly is honored to take part in the annual observance of World Autism Awareness Month to advise, to address diverse needs of individuals and families affected by autism. Now therefore, the Killenly Town Council does hereby recognize April 2023 as World Autism Awareness Month, and we call its observance to increase understanding and acceptance of people with autism spectrum disorder. Killenly Town Council, Jason Anderson Chairman, dated at Killenly, Connecticut this 11th day of April 2023. We'll now move on to item 6B, which is a proclamation recognizing Young Marine Michaela Barstow. I will read this off, and then I will come over and present. This pro, this is a proclamation honoring Young Marine Michaela Barstow. Whereas the Natchog River Young Marines, the local unit of the United States Marine Corps League, is a youth education and service program for boys and girls that focuses on promoting mental, moral, and physical development of its members, including character building, leadership, and encouraging a healthy, drug-free lifestyle. Whereas the Natchog River Young Marines is honoring Sergeant Major Michaela Barstow, who has served honorably since 2013. She has earned her rank while developing peer relations with leadership, discipline, and teamwork. Whereas Michaela has been able to apply her determination throughout her schooling at Plainfield High School and is a member of the class of 2023. Michaela is a member of the National Honor Society. Michaela has also served as varsity cheer captain and was awarded ECC Scholar-Athlete Award and 2023 CIAC Class S All-State Cheerleader. Michaela's enthusiasm for cheering allowed her to spread her passion as a Plainfield Youth Teach Cheer Coach. Michaela is actively involved in the music and theater departments, and will be attending the University of Connecticut to pursue a career in music. Whereas Michaela acquired 876 hours of community service within her 10 years with the Natchog River Young Marines, participating in many Killenly community events and cleanup initiatives. She has taken an active role mentoring youth and is constantly encouraging youth to live a drug-free lifestyle. She has founded Michaela's mission, which was Care Bags for Children in Foster Care. Michaela's commitment to give back to her community is her driving force and has been awarded Distinguished Order of Merit, the highest award within the Young Marine Program. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the town council of the town of Killenly that Michaela Barstow is publicly recognized for her selflessness, generosity, and willingness to help others within a community. Michaela's guidance is noted and gains the respect of a true leader and humanitarian. And be it further proclaimed that she be commended for her devotion to her peers, their families, the Young Marine Program, and our community. Jason Anderson Chairman dated at Killenly, Connecticut this 11th day, April 2023. Joe, would you like to make any comments as our commander?
There's so many I could make. Do I need to talk into the mic?
Yes.
Well, I was a unit commander for 11 years there, and this program is unlike any other boys and girls organization. We do promote a lot of drug-free lifestyle, a lot of public speaking and things along those lines. Most young Marines, when they start off, um, they're a little liffy about the program, not sure where to go. But we work with them, um, Michaela's no different. We work with them until the light goes on, and then, um, they, they just, they pursue it. And that's what any, within, within any organization, um, once they want to pursue something, then, um, they'll strive for it. But she's gone above and beyond on so much stuff in, in the program. And, uh, she's traveled all over the country, some, some of it even on her money that she worked for during the summertime to mentor youth in different parts of the, of the, uh, country as young Marines. But, um, she's got a retirement coming up in next month, um, which they've asked me to put together. I've put it together, and I cry every time I go to edit it. So it's gonna be a tough, a tough spot, but, um, I can't be any prouder of her than I am, but, uh, and, and they've become family. She actually calls me, well, there's dad, I'm dad two, and she has a dad three. But, um, when she goes on a date or gets a boyfriend, we all have to approve. So, um, but it, but, but it is a, it's a great, it's a great organization. I mean, you've probably seen him around town. We do a lot of work in Putnam besides. But, um, as, as the unit does about 10,000 hours of community service a year. So they're out there doing it, um, a, a lot. So, um, that's, that's all I have.
Thank you very much. Michaela, on behalf of the town council and the town of Killenly, just want to thank you for your devotion, dedication to this community and everything you do. Thank you.
And, uh, Mr., if I may, um, we will, we have a flag here that we will actually be flying in Michaela's honor in a recognition of all of her dedication and efforts. So that will be flown here at the town hall. Um, and then we will get, we'll pass the flag on to her after we've flown it on her, in her recognition. So congratulations.
Thank you. Next up on the agenda is 6C, uh, presentation of Water Pollution Control Authority Fiscal Year 23 to 24 Budget. I will entertain a motion to table this for now. A motion has been made by Mr. Grandelsky. Seconded by Ms. Wakefield. Discussion?
If I can, just to let you all know that there was, um, a revision to the budget that we noticed earlier this week. So we are gonna be going back to the WPCA. They're gonna be re-reviewing again. But, um, just, that's the delay, and I apologize for that. But we are human at times, so. Thank you for your patience on that.
Thank you. And that will, you put that on the agenda for the May regular or special meeting?
Um, I was looking to probably put it on your May special meeting, if that's acceptable to the council.
Okay. It will be, this item will be picked up at the special meeting in May. Next item up is unfinished business for town. Oh, yeah. That's right. I'm trying to get out myself. Uh, for any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. This item is tabled. We'll now move on to the agenda. Item seven, unfinished business for town meeting action, and there is none. So we'll move on to item eight, citizen statements and petitions. Ms. Cloro, did we have anything submitted for the regular council meeting?
We did not receive anything submitted for the council meeting.
Thank you. Anyone here who would like to make public comment, please step up to the podium and state your name and address. Last call for public comment. Seeing none, we'll move on in the agenda. Next item up is item nine, council and staff comments. Seeing none, we'll move further on in the agenda. Item 10A, appointments to boards and commissions. We have none this evening. We'll move on to item 11, Board of Education Liaison. No.
All right. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
So, um, at our last board meeting, uh, last week on April 5th, we went through, let's see, a couple of house cleaning items. And then for, on facilities committee, we adopted the use of the non-lapsing fund for two projects. One of them, uh, the Killenly High School greenhouse roof for the ag program needed to be replaced. That was in the not to exceed $60,000. And then the other use of the non-lapsing was for some paving over at Goodyear. And I believe that was at $95,000. The next big items were, we had, had, uh, we adopted the annual healthy food certificate, just, uh, allowing to, to serve healthy foods at the lunch counters. We also moved forward the ADA compliance for the website. I guess there had been some issues with that, so we're moving forward with updating that. Big thing was, we've moved forward with Community Health Resources, CHR, on getting a behavioral health facility installed in the high school and possibly in the middle school. So they're working on a MOU to get that moving forward. And then we're in budget season, so you guys have that, so. That's, that's the update for now. Any, any, any questions?
Any questions from council? Ms. Barclay?
All right.
Um, I just have, um, some concerns from somebody who called me, and it was, some of it was in regards to the website. That, um, they saw that the red line, the high school newspaper, the last was, um, on the website available was from 2019. And also for the BOE, um, when you click on the attachments, there is no attachments for the agenda, for the agenda.
Okay.
And, um,
I can pass that along to IT. I mean, I don't know.
And also, um, they were questioning, um, what type of priority do they have in regards to science education? It looks like there's only one science teacher for KMS that has to serve as the whole school. And of course, the Latin, and they asked, um, when the Latin classes were being offered, are they being offered at a, at a, um, during another core class? And do students have to make a choice between taking Latin and a core class? Can the, can the, can it be placed in a different spot? Because the Latin class is very, very important.
So we understand. We're, we're, we're getting.
I'm just, I'm just relaying this information that I'm.
And, and I, I fully support the Latin program. I think it's very important to keep in place, personally.
You know, is it, is it being offered with, um, I'm gonna say, um, with calculus, so the kids have to choose between Latin and calculus? It, so where's, where are the Latin classes being offered?
Okay. I can look into that. What was the first thing you, you had said, you would, before the website?
Before the website, I think that was just the website updating the red line.
Oh, the red line, yes. Okay. Thank you.
That, um, 2019 was the.
Was the last time it was on there?
Yeah.
Is that any, the link for the agendas?
And the link for the agenda. The agenda's there, but you can't, you can't get anything. Yeah, the budget one also, um, looked today, and the BOE budget is not online, or could not find it anywhere.
Okay.
And we asked for that, um, what, a week and a half ago? At, as of, um, when we had our meeting on Saturday, at, um, that Saturday, the combined meeting.
April 1st.
April 1st. Was that April?
Yes.
Wow.
Joke's on us.
So it.
I'll pass it along.
Okay, thank you.
I'll be nice.
Hello.
So, so I just, um, I'm, I just, I'm gonna reiterate what Ula said. And obviously, you guys have seen all those emails. But the, I believe the consideration should be to save an academic over any type of soft skill, any type of elective. I mean, it's a world language, and that world language, you can jump off to pretty much any other world language if you know Latin. And it, it goes back to his, his history, science, medical, any type of arts, um, law. I mean, it, it's so important. And the fact that Mr. Dodge came out of retirement to come back and teach Latin, that's how passionate he is. I mean, he's got over a 40-year, uh, his students will probably remember those classes for the rest of their lives. They have been so valuable, and I just don't understand how that could even be a contender for being cut.
I agree.
And, and take, I, you know me, I'm just gonna say it. As a Board of Ed, I think you guys need to tell the administration, find your cuts somewhere else. Literally, find the money somewhere else, because that is just not acceptable. And I saw, um, in the breakdown, the details, there's a hun, correct me if I'm wrong, but through the negotiations for the budget, it looked like $190,000 is earmarked towards special education potential. So it's kind of, it says placeholder right on the page. I don't remember the page number. But would there be a way to take that placeholder money and protect the Latin class and use the non-lapsing fund for what it was originally made for? Special education on unexpected needs and facilities? I mean, it makes more sense to me. So, that's all I have. Thank you.
I, I, I do agree with you that, that the Latin is integral to, to so many aspects. It's used in my home personally, so I, I understand that.
If, if I may, I just want to make sure that, you know, there's referencing that you guys are making to comments. So there was a number of public comments that had been submitted for the public hearing, which will be delivered to the council and put on the website for, um, for Thursday's meeting. And a lot of them were relating to the Latin. So for those that are watching this online or hearing this after the fact and wondering why wasn't my comment acknowledged at the regular town council meeting, it's because it was regarding the budget, and the public hearing for the budget is on Thursday. And so all of those public comments are going to be addressed on the Thursday meeting. Just for those that are listening, if they're asking, if they're wondering, why wasn't my public comment acknowledged? And I know that you're referencing comments that you've received. I know many of you were CC'd on those public comments. That is why. So they will be publicly addressed at the Thursday meeting.
Thank you, Mary.
Mr. Wood?
Yes, sir. So I have more of a question that regards the ability of the board to, um, I think you guys do have the authority, but I just want to double check there before I give any incorrect information to anybody. Because obviously, it, it sounds like all of us are in agreement. Latin's very important. You know, for any of us that are in the medical field, we, we know that Latin's extremely important. And so, and I, and I feel like the Board of Ed is probably on the same page on that aspect as well. So my question is, is when you're talking, because to say that we're cutting something from the budget, that would mean that the budget's already approved. So when we're suspect, when we're looking at budgets and we're looking to reduce what's, um, proposed, what authority do you guys have to actually tell the superintendent and the administration, this is going to stay whether you like it or not, if you will? I guess maybe a nicer approach than that.
I, I don't know specifically what, what, I believe that the Board of Ed can direct the administration to keep or lose items from the budget, specific items. And, and I know in my, my own personal self, this will be a directive that I would, that I would personally put forward on my behalf, that Latin stay. I've gotten more comments on this than anything that I've gotten since I've been on the board. And I've gotten a lot of comments on a lot of different things, so this has been, uh, yeah. And it was, it's the budget process we're in right now. The, the budget's not set. The cut is not set, so it was just mentioned, and, yeah, it kind of set off a firestorm, so. I think, I think Latin has been, it's known that people want it. And, uh, we would, I would certainly recommend it, and I, I hope others will as well.
Also, just in regards to CHR, um, you know, I, I'm happy to hear that you guys are going forward with a, a program there. I know I've, I've dealt with CHR a few times there, um, within my own job, and I've seen some of the great work that they do, so happy that you guys are able to move forward with somebody.
Thank you.
I just want to clarify one thing. Where we're at in the, the budget process right now, for those that are listening, the budget, the superintendent's budget did go to the BOE. The BOE did make cuts on the superintendent's budget. The budget that's before the council right now, and that's gonna be a public hearing on Thursday, is the budget that is brought forward to the council. The town council can't make any cuts to any programs on the BOE side. The only thing that the council can do is affect the overall number of the BOE budget. Once that's approved, then the Board of Education decides how they're going to allocate the money that's been allocated to them.
Okay.
Ms. Wakefield?
I was gonna just speak, because I know, um, I know, I believe Jill from Economic Development has, has attempted to reach out. The KBA, I know, and Economic Development are actually looking for an education representative so that we could, you know, we're, we're trying to, trying to keep everybody in the loop. I mean, we want to be inclusive. The KBA does a lot of work. Economic Development does a lot of work. A lot of the stuff we've actually discussed in the last few months is incorporated. How do we get the kids involved? And, you know, let's be frank and honest, we have some really, 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 really talented children in this town. And, um, we're, we're trying to, trying to bring them in, to help them to be more active in our, in our, in our government. Because they are the future, so. I know, I know it's tough. I know you guys are stretched. But I, I just wanted to make sure I put that forward. The EDC and, and the rec department, too. A lot of time, a lot are, the, I guess there is somebody that's designated, but doesn't show up very often. And, I mean, Economic Development and, um, rec department actually meet the odd months. So it's only like six, maybe, maybe six months. And they're really, generally, they're pretty short meetings, so. But yeah, if we, if we could get somebody, that'd be, that'd be wonderful. Thank you. Because, you know, I dragged my kids, my, my kids are involved where they are in their life because I dragged them along. And so, um, but not everybody has that, that ability. If we can open up the doors to our, our town government, to a wider group of kids, those, they're the leaders. They're our future leaders. And, you know, you never know what's gonna light somebody's light bulb up, so.
No, I agree, and then you end up with more kids like Michaela that was just here, so. Point taken.
I was just gonna remind Kyle of that for the liaison for the Board of Ed, because we talked about that last, not last meeting, meeting before. I had let you guys know that, so. And I hadn't heard anything, so.
I had let you guys know that, so. And I hadn't heard anything, so.
Just one more comment on the Latin. It's, it's not just the Latin, it's the high quality of Mr. Dodge. He's a passionate teacher. He te- he teaches each child as an individual. So everyone starts at a C and if they're, they're not as, everyone starts as a, at a C and they go up from there. So everybody's graded on an individual basis. And my son had said, well, Mom, if he graded me like he graded everybody else, there would be no room for me to grow. Because he's, he's, um, a very good writer. So Mr. Dodge pushes everybody to their limits and he is probably one of the best teachers in that whole school.
He, he was my English teacher and he was, he was, he was tough, but you know, I, I write really well. I can write a good story, let me tell you.
I just wanted to make sure to congratulate you on the CHR. You were able to fight really hard for compromise. You know, some people in the town really wanted a mental health clinic in every school and some people didn't want it in the school at all. And you fought and you fought until, uh, you could reach that compromise where the children would get behavioral health services, but parental consent was, uh, had to have parental consent. So I just, it was a amazing process to watch and I'm very, very proud of you all, all of you. So, thank you.
Thank you, uh, you know, we, we, we're happy with, with the way it's going at this point. It was, it was a journey for sure and, uh, it was not easy for anyone on either side of the, the, the equation. So to have it come around like this, uh, you know, we're, we're really pleased. It would've been nice if it would've happened sooner, but you know, the way things, uh, happened, it just, it is what it is. And, and we're, we're glad that we're, we're moving forward and I'm glad that many of my, uh, my, my members, the co-members, they stuck with it, cause it would've been a lot easier to just throw in the towel and, and just say, forget it. We're not gonna fight this any longer and, uh, go one way or the other. So I'm, I'm, I'm happy with it, but I appreciate your thoughts.
Thank you. Any other comments? Mr. Navarada, I would like to thank you for coming and joining us this evening. We'll now move on in the agenda. Next item up is eleven B, Borough Council Liaison.
Well, as you probably heard on the radio, uh, we had our budget meeting last night. A large number of people from the fire department showed up and are very passionate about adding thirty thousand dollars for one daytime paid staff. I don't know how effective that could possibly be if you have one person in the station, if you need to run a truck. But, uh, we now have extra meetings because we're gonna have to address the fact that they, um, declined the budget. And, yeah, I, I, I spent my life in the fires, fire station. I literally grew up in the fire station. And, um, if, if you don't have the numbers to prove that you need it, and I know they have this two hundred missed calls, but a lot of that is lift assist and medical calls and that's not something a firefighter does. I'm, but anyways, it's, so yeah, I have extra meetings for the borough now for a budget. We're gonna have to discuss it and go over it and, um, but we'll see, we'll see what happens.
Few questions on that. Were they missing any calls during specific times of the day or was it just randomly?
The position they're looking to fill is a Monday to Friday, and I apologize, my allergies are kicking off and, yeah. Uh, so I have a lot of yuck going down there. Monday to Friday, um, they're talking six to six. But probably more of just an eight hour, somewhere in that eight hour realm, but basically Monday to Friday.
Yeah, but were they saying they were missing more calls daytime response versus nighttime?
Um, probably more the daytime.
More the daytime. Were they getting out for fire calls during the daytime?
I believe those aren't the problem. The problem is the medical.
Okay. Uh, just, uh, trying to clarify some of the things I've heard. They're a resident of the borough as well, so kinda helps me understand this a little bit better. And I understand too that the, overall of the fire department's budget is being increased regardless.
We are, we're, we're, we're purchasing them a fire truck on top of everything else. Obviously expenses are going up because electrical went up, fuel oil went up. Gas went up, so I mean, that's, that's going up anyways. And I, and I, and don't get me wrong, I think all of our emergency service personnel should be compensated in some way, shape or form because that's what we rely on. When you call nine one one, that's, that's it. And like I said before, um, I grew, I literally grew up in the fire station. I mean, my dad was already in the fire department when my parents got married. And I literally went down to the fire station. My earliest memories, those, the stools in the fire department and the pool table looked like monster size. Those are my earliest memories. I, I went to, I was, actually went to the old wooden Davil Fire Station, which most people don't even remember, before they took it down and built the, the brick one that they have. So I, 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 I have no problem compensating people, but you, you gotta, you could, you gotta have the numbers to support it.
And currently they're fully a hundred percent volunteering?
They're, yeah, right now they're completely volunteer. Um, they have twenty-nine members, I believe.
Yeah, is there a stipend program?
There is a stipend program.
Okay. On top of that, I know, I know I saw the chief's line item, he also gets a stipend as well.
Yeah, the, yeah.
All fire chiefs do in the town.
Well, when my, my dad was the fire chief, he didn't get a stipend, but.
That was also quite a while ago.
It was a really, yeah, my dad, my dad and my grandfather served probably over fifty years. So.
Thank you, Dan.
No problem.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but didn't I hear something about the, was it the, is it fire commissioners?
Yes.
Study and said that this wasn't, uh, um, supported requ- like they didn't need it?
The, the fire, there are two fire commissioners that actually met with Chief Kelleher and Deputy Chief Burgess. And they went over the numbers and, so it's, it's, it's been talked about. It's not just one person's decision. There is multiple people on this.
But my understanding was that the commissioners did not see the need for a full-time, or did I misunderstand?
No, no, you're, you're correct. The commissioners met with the chiefs and they had the discussion. And the numbers just did not support. I mean, two hundred calls in a year is, if you spread that out, that's, I mean, you have three hundred and sixty-five days. So it's really not a whole lot of calls you're missing. And like I said, most of them are medical.
Which they wouldn't have responded to, correct? Or would they, as a backup?
Technically, the fire department, when nine one one goes out, you're supposed to respond.
If, if I may, with the, um, with that, in regards to that. So any medical call that the fire department is missing, the ambulance is going and being tied up on, whether it's lifting assistance or things like that?
And, and the thing with lift assist, um, I know there's a lot of pushback from a lot of the departments in town. If you're trying to pick a four hundred pound person up off the floor, you can't do it with two EMTs. That's, that's just not gonna happen. Ray, Ray actually showed up in my workplace once and I actu- we were actually, had to lift somebody and we used the, the mechanical Sarita, which Ray was very, oh, I like that. It actually helps them stand up and we could move them to, to the stretcher and, so, yeah.
And we, we don't.
But they, they don't have that. They don't, most homes don't have a Sarita or a Hoyer or something to pick people up off the floor. And if you're trying to lift three to four hundred pounds off the floor and you're talking basically dead weight, it's, I mean, I can, I mean, I got some good muscles, but that's, that's, that's a lot of, that's a lot of weight to try to lift. And then you're gonna be, end up with people with back injuries and other things, muscle strains and that's workman's comp. And then you're gonna lose your EMT and, you know, the, the reality is, is our firefighters, our EMTs, our EMRs, our paramedics, they're all in the same canoe. We're all, you're all in this, they're all in the same canoe. And if you, they don't learn, start learning to work together, they're fighting for the same volunteers, is what it is. And, you know, the state's not making it easy for us. I, it's just, it's very frustrating because, it's just very frustrating. Because nothing's changed since the time I was little. I mean, the fire department's still, my department's better than your department. And no, you're not, you're all in the same canoe and, you know. I, I will fight with my dying breath for our, our volunteers. But I, I repeatedly reiterated that you need to have numbers to back up what you want.
So what's the total amount?
They, they're looking, they're looking for an extra thirty thousand.
But what's their total ask?
For the fire department?
Yeah.
I don't, uh, I left that.
Well, cause you said something about the, a new fire truck, but that came out of.
That, that came out of ARPA funds. That's about ninety thousand.
How much?
Nine hundred.
Nine hundred?
Thousand.
Thousand? And they want more than that?
Fire trucks are cheap. My brother built, designed the ladder truck in Davil and that was over a million, so.
Any other questions, comments? Seeing none, we'll move on in the agenda. Next item up is item twelve A, discussion and acceptance of, acceptance of monthly budget reports. Can I get a motion to accept the summary report on general fund appropriations for town government? So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made by Mr. Wood, seconded by Mrs. George. Uh, discussion? Comments, questions? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. We'll now move on in the agenda. Next item up. Uh, can I get a motion to accept the system object based on adjusted budget for board, for the Board of Education? So moved. Motion made by Mr. Wood, seconded by Mrs. George. Uh, discussion? Questions, comments, especially since we have the BOE liaison here.
How are we doing on, do you have an estimate of how much is gonna be left over for this year? With the non-lapsing, based on what you guys are considering using, well, you approve to use for the greenhouse and the paving?
As far as the non-lapsing account? I, I honestly don't.
And it's still, uh, it's still capped at two million, right?
Yes.
That's correct.
How much was that total? One fifty-five for those two projects?
Those two projects were one, up to, up to one fifty-five, not to exceed.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Now move on in the agenda. Next item up is thirteen A, Town Manager's Report.
Um, so the first item, I just wanted to give you all the information that our long-term revenue collector, Pat Monahan, is um, retiring at the end of this month, so her last day will actually be on the twenty-seventh. We are gonna have a, you know, just a small recognition for her that day, so feel free to stop by if you'd like to and wish her well. She, um, is really looking forward to being able to spend some time with, with her grandbabies. Um, and she has really served our community, um, wholeheartedly and been very dedicated. She has, you know, um, everybody struggles with, uh, having to pay their taxes at points in time and she really manages it very gracefully, um, and really works individually with everyone to, you know, accomplish that goal with, um, with grace and, and, um, so we appreciate everything that, I've, I've been so blessed to be able to work with Pat over all these years, so, um, you know, kudos to her. And so we have begun, um, the, um, actually we, we've worked through the interview process um, of our, um, of a new revenue collector. So I will be looking to bring that to the personal subcommittee and then probably your special meeting, hopefully in beginning of May. We'll be looking to have a new appointed, um, revenue collector, so, um, really excited, um, for, for that process to also go through. Um, but, uh, just letting you know, big congratulations to Pat. Um, next, FEMA flood maps. So FEMA's been working, Federal Emergency Management Agency FEMA has been working on updating their flood hazard maps and the determination of where the flood plains are gonna be. They've given us, and I included that communication in your, in with my Town Manager's Report, the updates that they're making to those maps. We will be getting the shape files for those, the map files, to be able to integrate those into our mapping system. There is a process for what we have to do locally to essentially accept and add those maps. And I say accept only because I don't know that we have a whole lot of option around not accepting them. But basically to make sure that we've integrated them into our zoning and make sure that the zoning, our, our zoning regulations, as well as any town ordinances, are in compliance with those new maps. So we are working with the FEMA representative to make sure that we're being able to pull all those in together. So, uh, Planning and Zoning Department is working on getting ready to bring that forward to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Eventually it's gonna come here to the Town Council. This process is required to be completed before September seventh, so that's just kind of the timeline that we're under for that. So just to give you a heads up that that's gonna be coming, obviously we'll bring it forward. Any revisions that we have to do for town ordinances will definitely come before your ordinance subcommittee before coming here. Uh, next one, I just gave the quarterly update for law enforcement calls in totality. Um, our, um, Seventh Officer, Officer Bouchard, he successfully completed his field training. So he is now fully operational within the department. We were in the process of going through the onboarding process of an, of our eighth officer and unfortunately he, um, ended up getting an offer with the US military and he decided to take that opportunity. So, um, you know, great for him, um, and, you know, we're gonna pursue and continue to look for a new, a new officer. So you're gonna see that advertisement go back out again and that's really why. Um, so we're gonna begin, you know, we're gonna be re-advertising for that position. And just also a heads up, the, uh, Law Enforcement Council, which is really, um, the council on the eastern side of Connecticut, um, has developed an actual, it says policy academy, police academy, it's a police academy that they've, um, developed. So it's a separate one from, um, the traditional post or the state's academy. They're actually running it out of, uh, um, Nor- the Norwich, New London area, there, that's where they're running it out of. Um, a lot of the eastern side of Connecticut was able to get in, um, trainees, uh, academy seats. Um, I believe that they had in this most recent academy, I think they had nineteen, um, candidates and, um, I think they've only had one that, um, withdrew through the, through the academy process. So they're gonna graduate out all remaining eighteen or so, um, which is really great. Um, and, um, all of our agencies, all of our law, law enforcement divisions have provided, um, staff to participate as instructors. So we've actually, um, one of our officers went down as a firearms training officer and we've had another one that was going down and, um, training on another, on another topic. So they have all of the topics, requirement topics from post. It is post-accredited. So, um, it will make us getting seats into an academy a lot easier because we're not now competing with trying to get into an academy with Hartford and New Haven and all those. and all those other larger cities that really eat up a lot of the seats. Um, our, our towns now have a better accessibility towards, um, a, a training academy. Um, so we, uh, killingly, um, depending on how our budget proceeds, uh, we would be looking to, um, submit for a seat in the, uh, Fall Academy. So, um, they're looking at holding another academy in the fall. So, um, it's a really good opportunity and makes it a lot more, um, realistic for those that are on kind of this side of the state to be able to participate and get into that training program. They did hold a, um, um, an informational session, um, a few Saturdays back, to basically just talk about what does it mean to go through the Police Academy? What does it mean to be a police officer? Like what are, just trying to, you know, s- give people more information about expectations and try and try, uh, you know, get through some of the myths and debunk some of the stuff and just really, people that are interested, what am I really getting myself into? And so one of our officers did participate in that. They had, I wanna say, close to twenty-five, thirty individuals that went to that, um, informational session, really eager and seeking, so we did get a list of those names. Um, and so we are gonna be reaching out to see, you know, and there were some right from through this area, you know, up in the northeast corner. So, um, that are really interested, so that we're gonna, you know, look at pursuing that list as well to see, you know, where they wanna, um, proceed with. But, so we've been very active in the LAC program and as well as participating and offering our services as instructors in the Police Academy that they're hold, that they're holding and that they developed. So, um, this last, this, this session was the very first session that they did, so they've had a pretty good turnout on the first session. And I will say, listening to all the other chiefs, um, who've had, they, that have cadets that are in this program, um, they're very pleased with what they're seeing as progression and quality coming out. So they're, they're pleased with that, which is a really good thing. Um, lastly, this is, this, this item is not on your, um, on my manager's report because it developed over the weekend. Um, our wastewater treatment plant facility, um, had a failure, an electrical failure, um, in our centrifuge, um, room. So both centrifuge, uh, centrifuges are down. Um, the electrical, um, system essentially got fried in it. Um, we've had the electric, we've had the electricians out, we've had the manufacturer out. There's two kind of, two different manufacturing components that had to come out. They've both been out, they've both done assessments on it. Um, they're still currently down Thursday. We're hoping that we're gonna be able to have a, um, we're gonna have developed a way to potentially do a, not a bypass, but a, uh, not really a circumvent, it's kind of like a Plan B, if you will, of being able to, um, get at least one of them activated. Um, the components that were damaged, um, they're still trying to find where we can get replacements in a short enough lead time. So what does that mean? Right now, we are having to, normally, the centrifuge is what dewaters the solids and we then haul it out as what's called cake or dry material. Dry is a lot lighter than liquid and you can get a lot more in dry than in a liquid load. Um, right now, we're having to haul out liquid loads. And so we would normally haul out one dry load a day. We're hauling out six liquid, six liquid loads a day. So it's running us between thirty-six hundred and four thousand dollars a day in loads. So, um, we have notified our insurance carrier as well and put them on notice, so we will pursue an insurance claim if it is not something that is covered or determined to be coverable under warranty. Um, some of those items, some of those components had shorter warranty items than others and, um, it's not clearly identified exactly what component drove the malfunction and that will determine what warranty capacity there is, but we have put our insurance company on notification. But at this point in time, they're hauling a minimum of six loads a day out. Um, this morning, I think by ten o'clock in the morning, they had four loads out the door because we had a backup in the system because of the failure that occurred and when it occurred in the weekend and trying to get all of it re-lined up. So, um, they're getting them out, it's moving, this is the, 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 we're still in compliance with everything. We've not, we've not, um, gone out of compliance with any of our permitting, but, um, it is definitely a challenge that they're faced with right now, so, um, that just is what it is. I just wanted to give you a heads up that, um, that is underway right now with the wastewater treatment plant.
Thank you.
Do they have lead time, Mary, on the parts?
That's what they're still trying to figure out, is the lead time. They don't, as of, uh, five o'clock this afternoon, they still hadn't, um, they still hadn't, um, determined what the lead time was gonna be on the, the VFDs. The VFDs were, are essentially what the components are that we're, um, needing to get and they still hadn't located where they could get them to be able to give us what the lead time was gonna be. So they're trying a, a lower, a lower capacity, if you will, type VFD component that would, coupled two together, may potentially be able to run. But of course, we have to be concerned about whether or not, it, right, we don't want it to kill the, the brand-new equipment, right? So we have to balance that and so all the heads are gonna come together on Thursday, try and see if this, you know, bypassing system will work in order to at least get one of the centrifuges operational um, and, and at least keep us, you know, get us limping along on that, so we're not having to move as much liquid loads, right?
Are these one-of-a-kind units or the standard unit that might be out there or?
Yeah, so there's, I find with wastewater treatment plant, there is nothing on the shelf. Like, there's no on-the-shelf, you know, there are some where you can, you know, they're standard, but, um, so it's, you know, they're new units, they're brand-new units. Um, they weren't necessarily custom-built for this facility. Um, but again, um, it's the, it's not the whole unit. It's kind of a one or two electrical components of the unit. And the problem is, is that with supply chain challenges that some areas are still having, these are, it's just hard to get them at this point in time. So, um, you know, the chances of both of them getting fried at the same time, you know, what's, what's the likelihood of that, right? We got it. So, um, so, yeah, we have, um, they're, they're trying to identify the lead time and they're also trying to brainstorm around, um, alternative ways of kind of remedying the situation in the short term to be able to get to the long-term final implementation. And, you know, we might wanna consider buying an extra one to have on the shelf. Yeah, right? Usually we do, but this is just not something that we would have normally, you wouldn't normally keep it on the shelf, right? But-
Well, that's what I was getting, is there's something like now, is there maybe a history being determined now that these particular controls?
So that the controls, we, we have similar type controls in other areas throughout the, you know, throughout the, um, plant. And there's, historically, there's not been an issue necessarily with failure of these and that's why they're still trying to determine what actually caused the failure and if it was really another component that fed into that component that, you know, like there was an electrical surge that took place. And somehow, that's what ended up, you know, knocking everything off. So they're still trying to get to that determined phase, which is why we're not sure if it's gonna be warranty or if this is gonna need to be insurance or kind of, or if it's gonna end up just being, you know, WPCA fund balance, right? Like, those are kind of the three alternatives around funding this. But right now, like, we, the loads have to go. You, you, there's no-
Yeah, we can't stop.
There's no stopping that, so you have to pay for the liquid loads, it has to go out the door and then we have to figure out how that all gets covered after the fact.
Now, is there a possibility that the old controls can get rebuilt? So we can have those as spares or are they, no?
Nope, they are toast.
Okay.
They are toast. We were very fortunate in the fact that when this occurred, it occurred while our employee, so our centrifuges don't have to run twenty-four hours a day. Um, we can, we have the, because we don't have a high enough volume for them to have to run all the time, so we turn them on. So, uh, our employee was in there turning them on and it happened when he was turning it on. And so he, it, it prevented, um, and he, because he was in the room, because he was there when it happened, it prevented an, a, a straight-out fire. You know, he was able to smell the, uh, the, the- Yeah, the, the searing electrical and so he was able to, you know, uh, stop it before it turned into a, a full-on fire. So we were fortunate in that we had the, the employee was right there and had the wherewithal to know, hey, whoa, you know, like, this is critical and was able to, you know, prevent it from getting worse. But, um, yeah, there's not gonna be a way of salvaging that, um, in us, for us to feel confident that there's not gonna be a continued problem with it.
Well, I was thinking for a spare, not for-
Sure. We, and we've rebuilt pumps before and kept them as spares, like where we can, we do do that. But, um, I, not for this, not for these two.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments?
Going back to the police and the new training academy, um, do you know, like, how many they accept, generally speaking, there?
I believe that they, um, are capping it out between twenty-five and thirty at the moment and that was just because, I mean, this was their very first training academy, so it was really green and having to make sure that they met all the components and iron out all of those first kinks. Um, and I will say, all of the departments that were looking to get seats in were able to. Nobody got turned away. So, um, I think that going forward, it's definitely gonna be a, a great viable option for the town.
Yeah, I mean, that's, we have multiple fire academies throughout the state as well as, um, other local instructors as well. Uh, so, I mean, that's just another component to emergency services to have these, uh, available, available things that are post-certified, as you've already mentioned, uh, so we can get more officers, because we are severely deficient in officers, as well as firefighters, EMTs and dispatchers, if anybody wants to be one.
That's true.
Any other comments? Seeing none, we'll move on in the agenda. Next item up is fourteen A, consideration and action on an ordinance amending Chapter Two, reducing the number of regular members of the Inland Wetlands and Water Course Commission. I will entertain a motion to adopt this ordinance amendment.
Second.
Motion's been made by Ms. Wakefield, seconded by Mr. Wood. Uh, Ms. Gloria, if you could just go over this quickly again, I know we did discuss it earlier.
Sure, so, um, this is just reducing the total number of regular members of the Inland Wetlands Commission to five from seven. Currently, it's a seven-member commission. Again, this is our only land use, and actually, really, our only commission that is more than five-member commission. All of our other commissions are five-member commissions with alternates. So this would bring this one back in line with all of our other commissions at five members, um, plus alternates instead of seven. And again, the Inland Wetlands, uh, Commission members had requested the council review this because they had, you know, as many of our commissions have struggled for membership, they've had, um, periods of time over the last year that they weren't even able to meet because they didn't have enough members to make a quorum. Um, and so, uh, business can get delayed very quickly from doing that. This would, um, your most recent appointment that you did to, for this, uh, at your last regular council meeting, um, would make five regular members. So if this is passed tonight, then you would have a fully seeded five regular member commission and that puts their quorum at three members versus four members if it's a seven-member commission. So, um, they were requesting that. Our ordn- the, the council's ordinance subcommittee reviewed this and recommended it to the council for full adoption. Our legal has reviewed and has said that there's no issue with that. We can, the, the council has the ability or the town has the ability to determine the number of members on that committee. So, um, that's where we're at.
Thank you. Any questions, comments? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. I'll move on in the agenda. Item fifteen A, new business, consideration and action on a resolution approving the proposed fiscal year twenty-twenty-three to twenty-twenty-four WPCA sewer fund budget. I will entertain a motion to table this due to the WPCA was unable to present the budget tonight.
I'll make that. Second.
Uh, motion was made by Mr. Grandelski, seconded by Mrs. George. Um, discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. This item is tabled. Next item up is sixteen, council member reports and comments. Ms. Barclay, could you start, please?
I have nothing to report. My, both of my meetings are next week.
Thank you. Ms. Wakefield?
Um, I just had the borough meeting on Monday, so, um, and no rec. Um, from what I understand, Peter Rabbit went well, so, um, rec departments doing, doing, they, they're having large, large turnouts for their middle of the week, their senior movies. I think they had seventy-five at the last one. So, um, people are coming back out and getting active and I've, I saw a couple of the, um, exercise classes when I stopped them last week. Um, they're, they're pretty full, so it's, things are going well. Um, people are coming back out and being active, so.
It's good to hear. Ms. George?
Kyle gave my report for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, the Inland Wetlands Water Course, uh, Commission meeting, I was unable to attend because we had a meeting the same night, at the same time. Mr. Wood?
I have no report. I'm supposed to meet with the ZBA, um, this Thursday, but I will be over at the town, at the high school for our budget presentation.
Ms. Murphy?
Uh, the wastewater one, I do not have. I thought they would be here. Uh, agriculture, um, Byron gave a B class. It was very successful. Amelia South was in, uh, she's gonna be working with the Agricultural Commission, uh, as kind of on the side, selling some of her classes. Uh, she does foraging walks and invasive species walks. Um, April fifteenth is a mushroom class coming up. You can contact Allison, she'll tell you where. Um, one of the members throws the spores out and teaches you how to grow mushrooms for food and all different stuff. It's pretty cool, seems pretty cool. Um, next newsletter going out first Friday in April and, uh, Jamie Gervais and Kalium Gervais have written some articles for it, so that's what I've got for them.
Thank you. Mr. Grandelski?
Uh, the Conservation Commission, they were talking about the forest management plan for Chase reservoir. Um, they're talking about the spring walks and bus trips. And they're talking about, they're still working on, um, with staff about listing of all the conservation easements that we have in town, so that we can have a better idea, because I guess we don't have a complete list. Like to get a better handle on that. And that's it?
Thank you. We'll now move on in the agenda. Next item up is seventeen A, executive session. And we have nothing for that, so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion's been made by Mr. Grandelski, seconded by Mr. Wood. Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? This meeting is adjourned.